I'm on mute.
Almost feel like you're a newscaster. Thirty seven.
Two minutes.
Naomi.
Two minutes. One minute. Is that good? No, no. How come we don't see any part of the speaker? All of this is moving, everything is moving. I can hear. Put it in text. I just says. Few minutes, I mean, one minute. Is that ten o'clock? No, one more minutes. Hello. Good morning. Ten o'clock. Everybody is in? Yes, thank you. I'm Nahid Khoseymi, the president of Montgomery County Board of Elections. It's my pleasure to introduce my fellow board member, Diane Nash Dillon, vice president, David Neiman, secretary. David is not there. Elsie Born, Alex Vincent, the newly board member. Welcome back, Alex. Alan Banoff, member. Ms. Amy Huber will join the board when she's soaring. I want to welcome you to the public hearing on the potential early voting site. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the Board of Elections website. We have received written document. We have included all written document into the record. The purpose of this meeting is to hear public comment before we make a decision on which early voting site to recommend to the state Board of Elections. The state law required that the number of early voting sites in Montgomery County go from eleven to thirteen. They may also recommend fourteen sites, but only by agreement with the Montgomery County Executive and Montgomery County Council. There does not seem to be much disagreement about what the three most popular sites are. Unless we hear something different today, I'm going to propose two motions on Monday. The first motion will be for the thirteen early voting site that we are required by law to recommend. My motion will be to retain our current eleven early voting site and add Nancy Dasek North Fortoma Community Recreation Center and White Oak Community Recreation Center. The second motion would be to add the fourteen site at the Bauer Drive Community Center. The Bauer Drive site selection will be contingent upon the county providing the funding for this site. The board and staff look forward to hearing from you today to learn whether those 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 motions accurately reflect the wishes of the voter in Montgomery County. I now want to introduce our board president, Kevin Karpinski.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Karpinski. I have the pleasure of serving as the attorney to the Board of Elections. The board previously discussed early voting site selection at its monthly meetings on June twenty-one and July nineteen. Staff provided briefing materials to the board on a total of nineteen sites, and those materials can be found in a link under meeting materials from the July nineteen meeting, and it's been updated with additional demographic census information, which the election director will touch upon during her presentation. Margaret Jurgensen, our election director, will begin this meeting by restating for the record the full list of early voting sites that were reviewed by the staff and the new legal requirements for the selection of additional sites. We will then have brief opening remarks from each board member, and we will then turn to the public for your comments. The board president has a list of individuals who have signed up to vote, to sign up to testify in advance. She will call on participants in the order in which they signed up. We understand that one individual has a scheduling conflict, which we are more than happy to accommodate. Public comments from those individuals who have not previously signed up will be heard at the end of the meeting at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak as described in more detail on the public participation policy on the board's website. This applies to elected officials and organizational representatives as well as individuals. Speakers are not allowed to cede their time to other speakers. When it is your time to turn to speak, please state and spell your name clearly for the record. I will defer back to the board president to introduce our election director.
Thank you, Kevin. We will now hear from our election director, Margaret Jergensen.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Jurgensen, and I am the election director for Montgomery County. The previously used eleven early voting sites were the Activity Center at Boar Park in Gaithersburg, the Damascus Community Rec Center in Damascus, the Executive Office Building in Rockville, the Germantown Community Rec Center in Germantown, the Lawton Community Rec Center in Chevy Chase, the Praesner Community Rec Center in Burtonsville, the Mid-County Community Rec Center in Layhill, the Potomac Community Rec Center in Potomac, the Silver Spring Civic Building in downtown Silver Spring, the Sandy Spring Volunteer Fire Station Ballroom in Sandy Spring, the Wheaton Library and Community Rec Center in Wheaton. Staff provided the board with eight additional options to consider in selecting the additional sites mandated by law. The Bauer Drive Community Rec Center in Aspen Hill, Rockville, the Caulfield Community Rec Center in Silver Spring, the Nancy Dasek Community Rec Center in North Potomac, the East County Community Rec Center in Burtonsville, the Long Branch Community Rec Center in Silver Spring, the Longwood Community Center in Brookville, the Upper County Community Rec Center in Gaithersburg, the White Oak Community Recreation Center in Silver Spring. There are some new factors to be taken into account in selecting early voting sites, which were described in House Bill seven forty-five enacted by the General Assembly in 2021. Those factors are accessibility of the early voting center to historically disenfranchised communities, including cultural groups, ethnic groups, and minority groups, proximity of the early voting center to dense concentration of voters, accessibility of the early voting center by public transportation, ensuring equitable distribution of early voting centers throughout the county, maximizing voter participation, including through the use of community centers and public gathering places as locations for early voting centers. On August twelve, the Census Bureau released updated demographic data, and I was asked to provide updated maps to assist the board in weighing its responsibilities to consider accessibility of the early voting centers to historically disenfranchised communities. The materials on the board's website have been updated to include the most recent data available from the 2020 decennial census on households within a five-mile radius. This can be found on our website at www.777vote.org under the Early Voting banner. In the interest of time and to allow the board to hear as much public comment as possible, I will not be repeating the presentation of over two hundred slides, but I do refer anyone who wants to to review those materials at our website at 777vote.org. Madam President, I yield back to you for opening remarks by the board members.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you. Before we hear from the public, I will ask the board member if they would like to say something. Three minutes talk. Yes, Diane. Unmute. She has to unmute herself. Unmute yourself. The host has unmuted. Yeah.
When the host unmutes an individual, it's the individual's passive feeling action to unmute. So if you want to.
No, it worked.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for that technical issue. Um, welcome, hello to my colleagues, friends, and and particularly to the interested voters of Montgomery County. I can't tell you how important all your input is and how much we value it, and I want to thank everybody for spending a Saturday on something so very important, and I am very interested in hearing everybody's views and working with the board to put together the absolute best plan for every voter in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. David.
Thank you, Nahid.
Yeah, thank you.
And and welcome to all board members, and in particular, welcome back to Alex Vincent, who's rejoining the board. And I look forward to welcoming Amy Huber in the future. I just wanted to say that, Madam President, that I very much appreciated your statement this morning. We've been talking about early voting sites for a long time. As as Margaret indicated, we, as a board, have been doing it since June, and you and I have been having these conversations as well. And I plan to support both of your motions that you indicated that you will be will be making. I would be interested to hear what our public is saying today, but so far, as you indicated, we've gotten a lot of input that supports what your motion would do.
Thank you. Alice.
Yes. I just would like to thank everyone who is signed up and who will participate today. This is what democracy is all about, everyone, hearing everyone's voice and making sure that we have free and fair elections. So again, I know as a resident of White Oak and an East County resident how important having the White Oak Recreation Center is, and I'm really glad to see that people have stepped up to let their voices be heard from all over the county about where we should have these sites. And so I'm just really glad to to see everyone participating. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex.
Madam President, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
It's good to be back. I feel a little bit like I'm coming back in at the in the middle of the movie here. I was on the board a couple of years ago for a term, and I'm glad to be back to fill an unexpired term of some good friends and colleagues who have pursued, decided to pursue other matters. Madam President, I really appreciate the proposal you've come forward with. I agree with Mr. Neiman. I do plan to support that as well. I think it's fair and equitable for all stakeholders and interests in the county, and I think it's it's going to be a good solution. I'd like to thank members of the public for coming today, notwithstanding the proposal. I, you know, I and and the other members, I think, are very interested to hear what you all have to say. This is an important part of our process, and thank you for taking the time, and it's good to be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Welcome back. Alan.
I echo what others have said. I think that your proposals on Monday are very good. I think that the Nancy Dasek Center and the White Oak Center will be very good, and I think that if the council will fund it, Bauer Drive is also a very good early voting site. I look forward to hearing it from the public. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you all. I will now recognize Alison McLauren. Sorry, I have allergy. Our deputy director, who will review the technical procedure that we will follow for this part of the meeting. Alison.
Thank you, Madam President. To keep background noise to a minimum, we are keeping all lines muted until it is your turn to speak. When the board president calls your name and recognizes you to speak, you will receive a pop-up notification on Zoom inviting you to unmute. If you are on the phone, this will be an audio notification that will let you know that you can at that time press star six to unmute. If we cannot identify you when we reach your turn, or if there's any technical issue that prevents us from being able to hear or unmute you when it is your turn, we will move on to the next speaker as we work to resolve the technical issue. At the end of the meeting, anyone who wishes to provide public comment did not previously sign up or who we were unable to identify when it was their turn will be able to use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on the telephone to raise their hand. Again, that will be at the end of the meeting, as our identified speakers will go first. Those commands, again, if you're on the telephone, are star six to unmute and star nine to raise your hand and ask to be given permission to unmute. Please do be patient until the end of the meeting. If you are not signed up to speak, or if we have difficulty recognizing your line, we will get to you. It just may take some time. We also have a staff member monitoring the chat. You may use that to communicate with us about technical issues, but we are not accepting public comment via the chat. If you would like to provide written comment, you will need to send those comments by email to elections@montgomerycountymd.gov. Madam Chair, I defer to you to recognize our first speaker.
Thank you, Alison. The chair recognized Delegate Charkoudian.
Great. Thank you. Madam President, board members, thank you so much for accepting public testimony and for your thoughtful work on this process. My name is Lorig Charkoudian. That's spelled L-O-R-I-G-C-H-A-R-K-O-U-D-I-A-N, and I always think I should get extra time when I have to spell my name. And I represent District Twenty in the Maryland General Assembly, which is Silver Spring, Tacon Park, and White Oak. And I'm here to advocate for early voting center in White Oak, and I'm grateful for the suggested motion that you have made. I think that that reflects what makes the most sense and the feedback that you have been getting in addition to the other early voting centers, and I hope that we also add a fourteenth one because early voting is crucial to making the promise of democracy a reality. And it's especially crucial for making that promise a reality for people who have multiple jobs, unpredictable schedules, families, children, elderly parents they might be caring for and who are dependent on public transportation. I think that the passage of House Bill seven forty-five is one of several important voting rights bills that we passed this year. Very proud of Maryland moving in the direction of improving democracy at a time when so much of the country is moving towards restricting voting and really in a direction that is violating the civil rights of so many of our community members. So as Maryland kind of moves us in the right direction, it's crucial that Montgomery County and Montgomery County Board of Elections takes that direction, takes these opportunities, and really models for the rest of the country what democracy looks like, what voting looks like, what voting rights and voting access looks like. And access is crucial for those rights to be a reality. So as you have said already, the House Bill seven forty-five highlights a number of criteria, including increasing voting accessibility to historically disenfranchised communities. The demographics of of White Oak and the immediate surrounding areas certainly fit that bill. Dense population of voters. White Oak is one of the denser, one of the denser population centers in our county. Access to public transportation. We have the White Oak Transit Center and flash rapid, the bus rapid transit going right through there and increasing the equitable distribution of voting sites. So when we look at a map, this fits sort of in the in the middle of all that. So for all of these reasons, I urge you to move forward with plan to add an early voting site to White Oak, and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, Daniel Coroma. Daniel.
Good morning, Madam President and member of the Board of Elections. Let me just say, my name is Daniel Coroma. That's D-A-N-I-E-L. Coroma is K-O-R-O-M-A. It is with delight that I heard your motion this morning because I'm a longtime resident of White Oak and one of the proponents that I've been advocating as a community member. We indeed have been a historically disenfranchised community, and I am happy that the Board of Elections is moving in the right direction. So let me just tell you the impact, five impacts that your decision will make in my life and the lives of residents of White Oak. First of all, it will reduce stress on the voting system on Election Day. And second, it will shorten the lines during Election Day. Third, it will improve poll worker participation and performance. Number four, early identification of, in terms of any type of, you know, corrections that need to be made, that would be identified during early voting, the period, and then a voter can then make sure that those corrections are made so that they could vote and participate in our democracy. And then finally, you know, this early voting site would create greater access to voting and increase voter satisfaction. As we all know, many people, you know, have apathy when it comes to voting because they feel like their vote does not count. Your action today would actually change that. It will reverse that. So I urge you to still vote in favor of White Oak, even though you say you're going to do it, but please still do it. And thank you so much for this opportunity for me to testify. I really want to thank all the board members for the work that you've done throughout the time I've been testifying before you for an early voting site in White Oak. Thank you for the opportunity.
If I said I would do it, I will do it. Thank you. Next, Nadia. Mr. Nadia.
Can you ask him to raise their hand to identify themselves? Can you ask him to raise their hand to identify themselves?
Oh, but he's not there.
We don't know if they're calling from a different number, so.
Okay, can you raise your hand if you're if you're here or you're available, whatever? Raise your hand if you hear us.
Okay, that we can move on.
Yeah. Move to the next one. Betsy Katiti. Yeah, raise your hand if you're, yeah, she's, that's Coroma. He's not there. Okay, we move on. You can come back later. Ms. Linda Wright. Linda Wright. Raise your hand. Okay, please.
Good morning, Madam President and board members. Thank you for your motion this morning. My name is Linda Wright, L-Y-N-D-A-W-R-I-G-H-T. I am the chairman of the Connection and Social Action Committee for Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Theta Omega Omega Chapter. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated had its humble beginnings as a vision of nine college students on the campus of Howard University in nineteen oh eight. The organization of nearly three hundred thousand college-trained members today has consistently been at the forefront of effective advocacy and social change that results in equality and equity for all citizens of the world. I would like to thank the Maryland Legislature for recognizing that it is necessary to create additional early voting centers in Montgomery County. I applaud the Maryland General Assembly for supporting the needs of our growing population in the region while acknowledging the growing diversity of our community. Without question, I believe the White Oak Community Recreation Center should be the site chosen by the Board of Elections as the newest early voting location. The White Oak community is home to a large population of African-American and immigrant voters. Many of these voters do not own cars and are reliant on public transportation to travel to work, to home, to purchase basic needs, and of course, to vote. Currently, White Oak residents must avail themselves of public transportation to travel to the existing early voting sites at the Maryland J. Praesner Community Recreation Center or the Silver Spring Civic Building. When voters who are public transit-dependent are faced with lengthy wait times at any voting, at any early voting site, they are compelled to leave because the length of time to vote does not balance with the amount of time that they can remain away from home. This is especially true for White Oak residents. Due to the growth patterns in the eastern section of the county where I reside, greater voting numbers at the Praesner Center and Silver Spring Building will not moderate in the future. In fact, they are likely to expand. We know that other sites will be under consideration, but do these sites have as many public transportation-dependent individuals as White Oak? Contrary to what some believe, this is not a partisan issue. It is a common sense approach to a growing county and a neglected community. We hope that the Board of Elections will recognize that this community should be provided with easy access to voting. White Oak has a very unique, diverse, and hard-working population. Many White Oak residents have shared that they rise in time to reach their work destination by seven AM on weekdays.
One second.
And during the early evening, they are off to their second jobs, which allows them to reach home by ten PM or later. Convenient early voting, specifically weekend early voting, is the only option for these individuals that work two jobs to support their families. It is important to reiterate that those individuals that work two jobs and weekends have a difficult time reaching polling places. A White Oak Community Recreation Center.
Three seconds.
Would help to reduce lengthy bus trips to other locations and address a major impediment to voting for White Oak residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sandra Zimmet. Sandra. Raise your hand.
She's be unmuted.
Yeah. She's on. Huh? She's on. She's on.
Hey, I'm unmuted, right?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, you can hear you now.
Good morning, Madam. Oh. Start. Good morning, Madam President and board members. My name is Sandra Zimmet. It's S-A-N-D-R-A-Z-I-double-M-E-T. I'm here on behalf of the Democratic Club of Leisure World. It's a senior community, as you know, located in Silver Spring, Maryland, and we have, hmm, we're inching up to nine thousand residents. I also serve on the Government Affairs Advisory Committee, which keeps Leisure World residents abreast of governmental actions which affect the Leisure World community. There's no doubt that older Americans are dedicated when it comes to voting. Last year, in twenty twenty, the voter turnout in my community was nearly ninety percent, most likely one of the highest in the county, if not the highest, and probably the state. We thank you, our commissioners, for easing the accessibility challenges seniors often face when exercising their right and duty to vote. But you can do better. We're grateful to you for providing Leisure World with a small drop box during the twenty twenty election. We used it in great numbers, so much so that each day our residents complained about having to force their ballots into the drop box, which constantly was filled to the brim. Many of our voters expressed concern that they could have reached down and pulled out a handful of ballots, but of course, cameras and security measures prevented such a theft. Despite the smaller size of our drop box, more ballots were received at the Leisure World drop box than in thirty other drop boxes in Montgomery County. Given our voting numbers from the twenty twenty election, we request that you place a large. we request that you place a larger, more normal-sized drop box in Leisure World for the twenty twenty-two election. Now, many of our residents prefer to vote in person, which is why the early voting centers are very important to us. Currently, our closest early voting center is Mid-County Rec Center, which for some residents can be a challenge to find and has limited parking. We seriously urge the Board to consider restoring the early voting center at Bauer Drive Rec Center. This location was one of the five early voting centers in twenty ten, twenty twelve, and it was extremely popular. There were many reasons to open it. Bauer Drive is particularly convenient for Leisure World. Its location along Norbeck Road makes it quite accessible for people to stop to vote on their way to work. There are more parking options at Bauer Drive. When school is not in session, such as for early voting for primary election, there is quite ample parking available next door at Wood Middle School. There is a bustling shopping center just across the street. And when it was open, I used to vote at Bauer Drive all the time. I could vote, pick up a prescription at CVS, and do some grocery shopping at the same time. It was wonderful.
And you don't have any more time?
No, I'm out of time.
It'll be shorter.
And I just thank you. We appreciate your consideration of our requests, and we thank you for your efforts and your hard work to make voting accessible to all citizens of Montgomery County. That's not true in other places in this country. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Nellie Flute. Nellie, raise your hand. Okay, you go on. Jeremiah Pope. Mister Pope?
Raise your hand. Yes.
Yes. You're on.
Okay, Madam President and distinguished board members. My name is Jeremiah Pope, that is J E R E M I A H P O P E. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of an early voting center located at the White Oak Community Recreation Center. I would also like to thank the elected officials and fair election advocates who have made this conversation possible. I am a longtime resident of Montgomery County, living in the Hillendale Community, which is south of White Oak. I support the Early Voting Center in White Oak because it would allow residents in a majority-minority community an equitable voting opportunity. It is a central location with access to public transportation, and it will combat long election day lines. I have spoken to many people in the apartment buildings and housing community, and each person that I have spoken to was excited to hear about the possibility of an early voting site that is accessible in their community. I respectfully request your support for an early voting center in White Oak, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Linda Foley. Please raise your hand. Linda? You go next. Rochelle Evans. Rachel. Rochelle is French. Rachel. Evans. Raise your hand. Not you, Alan.
She did.
Yes, yes, you are, yes.
Okay, Madam President and the Board of Election members. Thank you, thank you to the Board of Elections for giving me the time to speak today. My name is Rachel Evans, and I've lived in Silver Spring for over twenty-seven years, but the last thirteen years as a homeowner in White Oak. I am president of my HOA as well as a member of the Friends of White Oak. I'm here to advocate for an additional early voting location in Montgomery County and for it to be at the White Oak Community Recreation Center. This location can accommodate residents from White Oak and Route twenty-nine surrounding areas, those that work in the area like the FDA, Adventist at White Oak Hospital, and other Science Gateway employees that want to vote before returning to their homes in other parts of the county. The White Oak Community Recreation Center is already used as an Election Day polling site. It has the needed parking and electrical requirements, and it is located in a heavily populated community of voters from diverse backgrounds, cultures, ages, and socioeconomics. What unites them is that many do not have vehicles and rely on public transportation, which is limited due to the abundance of metro trains and the fact that bus service is limited on the weekends. The nearest early voting site in White Oak is the Maryland Praesner Community Recreation Center and the Silver Spring Civic Building, which are both over four miles from White Oak and are difficult to access by public transportation. Both of these locations have a history of long lines during the early voting and on Election Day, which makes it difficult for the elderly and persons with disabilities to wait in long lines to vote. The White Oak Community Recreation Center, on the other hand, is for many within walking distance, and early voting is an effective way to reduce Election Day wait times. It is less than a ten-minute walk from my community and may be a benefit to my friends and neighbors. Please do not let Montgomery County be a place where it's difficult for all citizens to vote. We should make it easier and accessible for all eligible voters. The additional early voting site at White Oak Community Center will be a great service to all of us and ensure those with transportation or ability challenges are not discouraged from participating in the voting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mister Evans. Delegate Moon. Please raise your hand.
Yes, thank you. And good morning, Board of Elections. I'm Delegate David Moon, an elected member of the Maryland House. I do represent the Greater Silver Spring and Tacoma Park regions, and I'm also here to urge selection of the White Oak Community Rec Center as an additional location. Not just because it's in my district, I actually do believe that it has objectively unique characteristics to make it attractive as a voting center. For clarity, I was one of a group of bipartisan lawmakers that earlier this year voted to expand the number of locations in Montgomery County, and I will double-flag that it was a bipartisan vote. And when you look at the goals that we placed in that legislation for transit access, providing access to historically disenfranchised communities and population density, White Oak checks them all. And I would just flag the transit bit because I actually worked on the Bus Rapid Transit project in its planning stages. This is Montgomery County's only rapid bus line with a station right at the footsteps of the White Oak Community Center, along with the Capital Bike Share Station and a few regular ride-on bus connection points. And that transit line goes right down to the Red Line Silver Spring Metro Station, also a transit link to Mark and the future Purple Line connection. So on top of that, FDA is expanding its presence and headquarters has funding through twenty twenty-two to keep adding workers there, and the Viva White Oak Plan tries to build a hotel residential biotech center there up near the hospital, which is also relocated there. So there are, this is already an activity center with a lot of people coming in and out and a lot of new transportation, transit, car and bike options coming in there. You will not find this anywhere else in Montgomery County. So this is the obvious place to do this. And of course, as everyone else has noted, the reason for all of this is because this is a transit-dependent population. So please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Paul Ellis.
Oh, you missed one.
Fatmara Berry. Fatmara?
Oh, Fatmara Berry. Fatmata Berry.
I'm right here. Oh, wrong one.
You're on, yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Good morning for allowing me to speak this morning. And I want to say a special thank you for your recommendation and your motion because it really brings a good feeling to me this morning and many of my neighbors. My name is Fatmata Berry. I am an attorney. I have lived in White Oak for almost twenty years. I'm here, of course, to testify for a permanent early voting site in White Oak. I have the privilege of having a car, but many of my neighbors don't. We have been missing here, what we have been missing here is equity and inclusion to access to voting. Majority of the population in White Oak is immigrant and black and brown people. The groups that have been disenfranchised the most than any other group. Many of my neighbors are shift workers, and I think this is something we don't talk about very much. Many of them are nurses and other healthcare workers. They take care of our schools, they're elderly, and they have multiple jobs. Many work double shifts, meaning they are working from about seven AM to maybe eleven thirty PM. Without a location in White Oak, this community will not have access to voting because of what, thirty-five percent of our residents do not have a car and they rely on public transit, which takes about forty-five minutes to the closest early voting sites. They're not able to move from job to job and make it to White Oak to vote on Election Day. Our community is a very dense community, filled with apartment buildings and families, and everyone here is excited about the possibility of having a site here. I and other community advocates have had to drive community members to vote at Praesner and the Civic Center. With this new site, my neighbors can now walk to vote and provide access to their right to vote. And I want to take this time to thank you again, and thank you to the Maryland General Assembly. I am so grateful that we have a wonderful group of people representing us in Annapolis. So thank you again for allowing me to speak, and thank you again for your motion. And I look forward to having this voting site, so we won't have to drive around this community, picking people up to go testify. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mister. Mister Paul Ellis. Mister Ellis?
Here I am.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Cosme, distinguished members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to testify today. I'm a lifelong resident of Silver Spring, and I'm a former future vote aide and a former Montgomery County election judge. Next year is going to be my tenth year participating in elections in Montgomery County in one role or another. I'm calling on the board today to locate a new early voting site at the White Oak Community Rec Center, reiterating a call from twenty nineteen, but today with stronger evidence for why the White Oak site is the best suited in the county. There's three strong reasons I want to contribute why the county should locate its next site at White Oak Community Rec Center. One, White Oak Community Rec Center has been determined to be the best, highest priority access point by the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services for vaccine distribution beginning in January twenty twenty-one, and has established itself as a positive, trusted, accessible site in the community in that role. Two, the Rec Center is trusted by the community and the board as a voting center for the twenty twenty general election, and it helped cover a large area of the county in a similar role to that of an early voting site because there were only forty voting centers covering the whole county. And third, White Oak was already proposed by this board as an additional early voting site in twenty nineteen. As one of the first, if not the first, county-run vaccination sites in the entire county in January twenty twenty-one, the White Oak Community Rec Center served at least six times as a priority vaccination site for the highest priority residents and essential workers in our community. It was used for vaccinations more than any other site in the initial round of county-run vaccination clinics. It was the only site down county or in east county chosen by DHHS despite having many vacant public buildings at that time to choose from. At the end of the day, ballots are like vaccines. They should be widely accessible to everyone eligible across the public. And the county's own DHHS determined White Oak was the best site devoted to distributing vaccines. It stands to reason that it would also be superb for providing access to ballots, and we have proof it does perform superbly in that role because it served on Election Day in November twenty twenty. It's, as others have stated, it's highly transit-accessible, it's got a lot of parking, it's got excellent sidewalk pedestrian access connections for people. If the board were to not recommend White Oak as the additional early voting center for the county this year, it would be breaking its own precedent and the high familiarity, trust, and positive feelings that community members have toward the facility. It would be going against its own prior recommendation and voters' expectation that they'd be able to vote there in June twenty twenty-two because they voted there in November twenty twenty. And we, I just strongly urge the board to recognize the county's own agency and residents of the area have already placed trust in the White Oak Rec Center for civic engagement of all types. So thanks for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, and thank you to your service as a Board of Election. Thank you, sir.
Why don't we go back through the list here?
Yeah, I've got the list. I'm going to go through the list, those which they signed but they did not get a chance to talk or give them a chance. Delegate Chakotian already did, Daniel Koma.
So we only have Indy?
Nadia, we could just do those which, yeah. Nadia?
Is Mister Nadia on the phone?
Is Mister Nadia on the phone? Raise your hand if you're. Not her, who else is there? Betsy Katiti, does she talk? Betsy? Betsy Katiti, is she on the phone? Or you're there?
No.
Who else?
Nellie.
Nellie Flut? Flute? Nellie Flut?
Nope, she's not there.
Okay. Linda Foley. Change your mind, okay, then, sir. All right then, any board member that says something?
If anyone else didn't sign up.
Yeah, just let me see, then, any board member like to say something? Okay, we will open the mic to whoever are there but did not register to talk. Please raise your hand.
We have a Lori Farmer who would like to be identified.
Who is that?
Lori Farmer, she said that she signed up.
Lori Farmer, Farmer?
Saf, if they can unmute Lori Farmer.
Lori Farmer, is she there?
Saf, can I please, here you go.
Yes, I am.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Lori Farmer, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify. My name is spelled L O R I F A R M E R. I am a resident of Colesville and a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Thank you for the previous remarks. I'll try to truncate mine to not repeat, but I did want to share my experience of a person who wants to vote and plans to vote and can end up almost, almost not voting. Like many of my neighbors, I was raising kids and supporting, working full-time and supporting my loved ones in need, and I tried on three occasions to vote at Praesner Center on one year. Twice, the voting lines were long and out the door, and I was after work and had responsibilities to rush home to. A third time, the voting center had closed before I could arrive. I was forced and to have, to be able to vote on the inflexible window that is Election Day. I'm here to remind you that the only reason I was able to cast a vote at all was because, one, I had my own car. I could drive seven miles past my neighborhood to, to the Praesner Center for multiple tries, and then again on Election Day. Two, I had the liberty to force a schedule change in my workday on Election Day. And three, I chose it was very important for me to vote because I have a family tradition of voting. As a child, I was in voting booths when that was allowed with my family every time, every year, every election, and learned from my parents the primary, the importance of voting. I have handed it down to my own children, who are now very passionate voters. One of them is here today, Alexandra Farmer. She too has registered and will speak to you today. An early voting center in White Oak will help our culture across the generations. It will be pro-democracy and increase equity in our county. It will build the tradition and civic responsibility that we need. This kind of thoughtful consideration is part of what makes our communities and our county strong. It makes me proud to live and vote here. Thank you.
We want to identify Alexandra Farmer.
Yes. Mister, Mister.
Alexandra.
Alexandra Farmer. Raise your hand.
Yeah, my hand is raised, okay. Hi, I'm Alexandra Farmer, and I'd like to thank you all for hosting this meeting. I'd just like to speak on behalf of young voters. I live in Colesville, obviously. I volunteered at the White Oak Rec Center for the, on Election Day last year, and I just want to say it's a very busy place, and it's a place that people make an effort to come to. I think it was like eight o'clock and this one woman was coming. She had just gotten her citizenship. And I'm saying as, not to be repetitive, but as a disenfranchised community and an area where many people use public transportation, there are people making an effort to try to vote. And I think to make it easier on these people, it would be smart to turn this into an early voting site. As well as many of my peers who are eighteen live in this White Oak area, and there are people that I've grown up with that, I went to White Oak Middle School, and then people in the high schools in the area that are all going to be able to vote by the next election. I think it's important for them who also don't have cars to be able to get, to have access to an early voting site as you're inviting new voters to the importance of having access to voting. So I'd just like to bring that to the conversation, that it's also important for young people. So, I'd just like to bring that to the conversation that it's also important for young people in that densely populated area, as well as it's important for older people as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just make a brief comment?
David, yes, please.
I just want to say that I believe that I met Alexandra at the White Oak Community Center on Election Day, and I wanted to thank her for her service and for her enthusiasm.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I second that. Any other speaker? Monty. Is it Mister or Missus? Mister Monty? Monty, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Monty Gingry. I live in Potomac LD 16 jurisdiction. And regarding the White Oak Center, what I notice is that it's still heavily car-dependent, like most places in Montgomery County. So, getting over from eastern Montgomery would still require a lot of people to get there by car. So, in terms of public transportations or walking, I don't see it being a particularly easy walk if you're coming from New Hampshire Avenue, as an example. While we're looking at White Oak, my concern would be that this is a one-off situation here where it's not presented on a map where the existing early voting centers are to date. And you're putting in White Oak, comma, but what other areas and districts are you considering early voting centers so that the population is equitably set up so that one area does not get more than another section of the county? For example, seventy percent of the county lives north, east, west of Montrose Road as it flows through the county. So, how is that distributed up county versus down county? And I would say before this becomes voted upon, that do a one-time, here the list of all the voting centers as it stands today, and what areas are not getting it as opposed to what areas may have more than is required based on just pure numbers of population.
Thank you for your concern. We have a map of the distribution of early voting center. So, we try to go everywhere, north, south, west, but some area of the county is forming area, and we do not have a large facility to have an early voting center.
I understand that, but there's probably other areas in the county in the same bag.
Right.
So, therefore, if you're trying to equitably distribute the voting centers by population, I think that needs to be foremost in the mix because if one area of the county has more than its population, as an example, and other areas get the short shrift of it, then I don't see how that's fair or equitable. Every voting site requires an effort to get to it. Most are not in downtown Silver Spring, right in literal walking distance off the red line, as an example, or a bus stop. So, that argument is a little, not shallow, but it's not as still need to get to, you still need a car to get to the facility, especially on bad weather, which can occur during election season, rain, snow, et cetera, depending on the weather. So, again, I would say it should be gritted up in terms of population first and foremost to be the most equitable way to do it. If, after all said and done, White Oak fulfills that, you know, provided the rest of the county is like that and gritted up like that way, then that's probably okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Our board attorney will answer your question. Go ahead.
So, I would encourage you to go to our website and look at the the distribution and where the proposed locations are located, and that map will be updated by the staff on Monday. But a lot of effort is put into addressing, trying to put an early voting site within a five-mile radius of where voters live. And so, when you look at that map, I think you'll see that there is a fair distribution that's throughout the entire county. But I would just refer you to that map and to the PowerPoint presentation. I know Mr. Naaman wishes to be addressed.
Right. Yes, if I could ask a question, Mr. Gingry, you suggested that we should consider other sites. And I just wanted to know, I mean, we have sites in Damascus, Germantown, Sandy Spring, Mid-County, Rockville, Gaithersburg, and we're now considering North Potomac, all of which are north of Montrose Road. So, I was just wondering if you have some other site in mind that we have not considered?
I would say probably Poolsville area would be one place to go. Also, when you're looking on the five-mile radius, you know, populations are maybe a little tighter in one area within five miles than another. But, you know, up county, five miles may not be enough in terms of, again, where is the majority of the population and get those centers? So, is it ten miles in Germantown versus five miles in Silver Spring, as an example? Five miles from, will take you from Colesville right to the district line in Chevy Chase at Western and Wisconsin Avenue, as an example. So, you know, that's heavily skewed down county versus up county. So, what it sounds like to me is the five-mile radius, if you filter, maybe it probably does need to be adjusted such that it doesn't reflect areas up in upper county. So, Poolsville would be one area up there, as an example, Damascus, and then...
Damascus has a site.
Damascus has a community center.
Damascus has had a site for many years.
David, if you allow me, let me tell you that. I drove through Poolsville.
But furthermore, up to, you know, the Frederick Line area, as an example, those other areas. So, I'm not projecting out of hand. I'm just saying, and I don't have a map in front of me and trying to get the map and so forth. This was, if you had a map, you know, on this call, it's an example, so people can see it real time, might be of interest. But those are my comments.
Thank you. Poolsville, actually, I drove through Poolsville and looked around to see if you can find a large enough facility to use it for early voting center, even a voting center. It's nothing yet.
Right, but they've also got, but also...
We already have Damascus Community Center, one of our voting places.
Right, but Damascus to Poolsville is quite a haul.
Right, but we need a large enough place to have them. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anyone else.
Do we have more speakers?
No. She want to identify anyone else who's on the call.
Any other speaker would like to speak, to give us their opinion? No? Okay, then. Thank you very much. So, we don't have any speaker. So, we have no additional speaker. Thank you for joining the public hearing. The board will meet on Monday, September 20th at 2:30 PM to further consider the early voting center. Thank you for all being a participant. Thank you so very much for getting this opportunity. Somebody just send us a note, and thanks for this opportunity. All right then. Goodbye, all. Goodbye, the board. See you Monday.
Bye. Stay well.
Thanks.